Welcome, this is the Red Hook Town Board Meeting of Wednesday, March 22nd. It's not as the 6th, it's April 26th, but it says 22nd on the piece of paper. Would you be kind enough to join me in the pledge of allegiance, please? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you very much, folks. Again, apologize for the delay. Up on the screen, this is what we'll be discussing tonight, we have a public hearing. It's a very read segment. We're talking about, in connection with the project that you've been following along for the last year and change, we're doing a connector, a multimodal path, taking you from Rec Park up to Linden Avenue. There'll be a crosswalk, and then the multimodal will continue and get you into Rec Park West there. In concert with that, there will be no ability, in that small tangent, to have parking as well because of the width of both the roadway and the multimodal path. And so what we have tonight is a public hearing on increasing the areas in town where no parking is permitted. It's just that tangent and a little bit of that easterly, that would be the southeasterly corner property, the Hennigan's property, 185 feet of that property, as measured by the engineer and myself this afternoon, to be exact. So that's the public hearing, and we have a presentation by our new housing committee tonight. Thank you very much for being here. We have some resolutions to consider. One is an application for the Hudson River Valley Greenway. As you know, we are continuing work on the Sawkill Trail. Most of it is complete. We do need two boardwalks and one bridge, and that's what the application for the grant is for. Next up is to consider some task orders, our engineering appropriations for speed limit studies in College and Forest Park. And then a resolution to approve an easement, Old Farm Road, so sidewalk easement. So from Route 9 to Tradition, there will be, as a condition of the approval for that development many years ago, a sidewalk that will take folks over to Route 9 and back. The final thing is, I guess that's about it. We're going to do department and committee reports as well. So without further ado, we are at slightly later than 7:35. So why don't we jump right into the public hearing? Deanna, would you be kind enough to read the public hearing notice, and then we'll get to announcements after.
Notice of public hearing, Town of Red Hook. Please take notice that a public hearing will be held by the Town Board of the Town of Red Hook on April 26, 2023, at 7:35 PM local time, to hear all interested persons on a proposed local law, number D, proposed of 2023 entitled "A Local Law Amending Chapter 131: Vehicles and Traffic Providing for No Parking and No Stopping Zone at Fruit Bud Lane", has submitted to the Town Board of the Town of Red Hook the proposed local law to provide for no parking, standing, or stopping on Fruit Bud Lane. The Town Board has classified the action as a Type II action. Please take further notice that copies of said proposed local law are available for review at the Town Hall, 7340 South Broadway, Red Hook, New York, 12571. All interested persons will be given an opportunity to be heard at said hearing. The public is encouraged to submit written comments by email to townclerk@redhookny.gov or by mail to the Town Clerk or by dropping a copy in the Town's Dropbox at 7340 South Broadway, Red Hook, New York, 12571, for receipt in advance of the hearing by 4:00 PM the day of the hearing. Please note "Local Law D Proposed of 2023" in the subject. All comments so received in advance of the hearing will be noted in the hearing record. Please observe the recommendations of the CDC regarding distancing and use of masks. All reasonable accommodations will be made for persons with disabilities. In such a case, please notify the Town Clerk in advance at the above address or by phone (845) 758-4606, so that arrangements can be made. By order of the Town Board of the Town of Red Hook dated April 11, 2023, Deanna Cochran, Town Clerk, Town of Red Hook.
Thanks, Deanna. At this time, I would like to open the floor and open the public hearing. Is there somebody here who would like to speak on the matter? Okay. Hearing none. And so why don't we take a look, shall we, at Local Law D? And just to clarify, it says 165, but when measuring on the curve, it comes to 185. There's a marker now for Teresa's benefit for where the sign can go. Can we make that change to 185, 100 yards feet? How do you get that to... Yeah, I had to review the resolution.
It's further back.
It's number five.
Oh, number five.
Number five. Yeah? Okay. All right, and then we made some mine edits to the top of it.
To take out for its entire length.
Sorry, say that again?
To take out for its entire length.
Right.
Of the prior version.
So it's 520. It's actually a good opportunity to be out there this afternoon and meet with some of the neighbors with the engineer. Got any questions, folks, on this? Okay. Hearing none. I think we'll entertain a motion to close the public hearing. Thank you, Christine. So move second?
Second.
Okay, hold on, favor Jacob.
Aye.
Bill.
Aye.
Myself. Thank you very much. Okay, very good, and we'll get to that in a little bit later on tonight. Announcements, can I quickly just re-group some announcements here? If you received a letter from our office, and a few folks received empty envelopes, and I do apologize, my assistant apologized as well. We do have some events coming up. Last weekend, we had both Eat Ways here on Saturday and Repair Cafe at the Community Center. We've got Arbor Day here on Saturday, the 29th, a free rabies vaccination clinic on Sunday, the 30th, 8 to noon, that's in concert with DC Department of Behavioral Community Health and the SPCA. Very popular shred day, who knew? I had no idea years ago when we instituted this, but it's back, May 7th, just two hours, 10 to noon, three legal size boxes. Cleanup Day is also later that day, street cleanup, 1 to 4 on Sunday. Apple blossoms the following weekend, on the 13th. Generally speaking, we have it from 10 to 2, but really it goes to 4 o'clock. Plant sale is following week for the Old Dutch Village Garden Club. And our very popular and important Memorial Day parade and ceremony is Monday, May 29th, at 10 a.m. We have some flyers on each one for the rabies folks. Make sure you sign up for that, you have to register for that. Okay, and the Cleanup Day, it's a typo on that, but it's Sunday, May 7th. Very good. With that being said, Housing Committee, you've got it all figured out, huh?
Yeah, we've got all kinds of solutions.
Okay, wonderful. All right, well, we've got no paper to take down those solutions anyway. Thank you very much, all of you, for your time and effort. Julia, Jacob, Hart, would you like to introduce yourself?
Good evening, I'm Hart Migdal, new Chair of the Town of Red Hook Housing Committee. And I think I can speak for everybody on the committee that we really approach this work with a lot of gratitude and knowing that it's a privilege to live in this great area. So I think that's a testament to the work that you all do also. So thanks for that. Thanks for convening our committee also. And a quick overview of what I have, which actually isn't lots and lots of housing solutions, but really I want to tell you, I want to state our mission and introduce our committee, talk about what we've been doing for the past six months, some of the strategies and things we've been learning, and then also get your questions and comments. And I'd like to plant a seed now, here at the start, that as I go through maybe the next 10 minutes or so, and do that, if you could be thinking about some of the housing and housing affordability issues that have come across your desks and that community members have brought to you, we want to hear about those things, and that will help us narrow and focus some of the research that we've been doing these past six months. So our mission, from the document created before we formed, is to identify housing concerns, provide housing education for community members, and promote and pursue opportunities for quality affordable housing in the Town of Red Hook. The Town seeks a balance of housing opportunities to ensure that Red Hook remains a vibrant community that presents opportunities for individuals and families seeking to live in the community, including low-to-moderate income residents. So we have a group of nine community members with diverse perspectives and backgrounds they bring to it. Some of us have recently arrived here, and there are other folks who are from multi-generational area families from Red Hook and Tivoli and the surrounding areas. We have people with technical backgrounds and skills from work in housing and planning, which is my background, and the work that I currently do. We have representatives from real estate community who are working with renters and buyers and sellers in our area. We have folks who also have the lived experience of being cost burdened in their housing circumstances, and also others who have ties to Bard College and other large local employers. So what have we been doing since we started about six months ago, last November? This is kind of the first phase of our work, so we spend most of our time educating ourselves about housing issues and looking at, you know, really dozens of articles and reports that have been produced about housing and housing affordability, particularly, you know, with a focus on local articles and reports. We meet right here at these tables every month for an hour, and we discuss those things. We also have a meeting, or actually working in between our meetings. And so our discussion is usually when we get here, we have an hour to meet, and really at the end, that's when the conversation really gets going, and we have a hard time stopping at the end, we usually go a little bit later. We had a guest speaker, Tiffany Zizula. She's the Deputy Director of the Pace Land Use Law Center, and I'll talk a little bit more about that in a minute. We've attended some outside meetings, like the Red Hook Community Needs Assessment at the Red Hook Community Center. Also created a virtual workspace where we're compiling some of our research and where we can work collaboratively, take notes collaboratively, and store a lot of these articles and reports that we're looking at. And then also we formed subcommittees to work between meetings, because as I said, we have a lot to go through. And I'll talk a little bit more about that in a minute, too. So some key takeaways from our first six months. Are you all familiar with Duchess County Housing Needs Assessment? Has someone presented on that to you already?
Yes, we did, and I was on that task force.
Oh, great. All right, well, I have some of the takeaways there, so they won't be new, but I think they are worth repeating, because it's really what got us started. Red Hook has high rates of cost burdened low-income earners. Cost burden defined as spending more than 30% of their income on either rents or mortgages. We have ownership gaps identified in the report for several of the lowest income brackets, numbering in the hundreds, up to the $75,000 annual income range and even beyond at lower rates. And I think we all know this, but the pandemic really has shown that a lot of folks who are in the low-income categories are people that we rely on daily, essential people in our communities, people working in hospitals and healthcare, grocery stores, restaurants, childcare, in our schools. The lower incomes also often include seniors and older adults on fixed incomes. In every scenario for population growth or decline, or steady population in the county, that population is projected to increase in proportion. So affordable housing options, that's something that I heard when I attended the CNA at Red Hook Community Center. It was brought up more than anything else, maybe except transportation and those things. We brought it up together a lot. At the same time, incomes between highest and lowest earners are projected to move further apart. So in a tight market like we have here locally, housing market, this is something that I think can create tension or maybe competition between some of the lower-income earners. I'm thinking of people like art students or workforce families, or single-parent and/or single-parent families, and also seniors. The report's focused on a backlog of affordable rentals and homeownership opportunities for the lowest-income groups, defined as less than $50,000 a year annual income. So it indicates 80 interventions needed in Red Hook. The, I think, shared responsibility or fair share approach is indicating about four per year for Red Hook for the next 20 years. And those interventions in the report include new housing units, new protections on existing rental units, vouchers to assist with rent payments, or access to affordable homeownership. So as a committee, we view these interventions as critical, but we also know that some of these are multilayered and could be difficult at policy level. Probably not teaching anyone anything new about that. They require compromises, I think. So some of the strategies that we've been looking at so far have come from our guest speaker. At our fourth meeting, Tiffany Zizula came, and she's been working with housing committees all over the region, particularly in like Westchester County, but also other places. And she flushed up a blueprint for committees like ours that lead to actions that fit in the local context of their communities. So a few takeaways, she encouraged us to think broadly about housing issues, both what she described as the big A, affordable housing, which is sort of what we might all think of as the subsidized housing and operation of affordable housing, but also the little a, which is more about creating a diversity of housing options that also meet the needs of low and moderate incomes. Education and advocacy is key. So as I said a moment ago, these are complex issues that may require compromises. But that said, I think it's worth pointing out that affordable housing, by any reasonable definition, doesn't have to be a trade-off with open space or other community goals. And it's a marker of a thriving versus merely surviving as a community. It definitely has connections to economic development, sustainability, livability, and so on. She reminded us not to silo housing and comprehensive planning processes. She said that committees like ours are often working in lockstep, as she put it, with comprehensive planning update processes, creating either standalone housing plans or advising parts of the comp plan that are dedicated to housing. And then she encouraged us to look at the current zoning and also search for innovative best practices to promote affordable housing. And so sort of as we do that, she was saying, you know, you should be creative in site identification and, you know, consider infill and hamlets above storefronts on unused property, just be in partnership that are owned by religious organizations, and that list also goes on. So what's next for our committee? Well, there's a lot of information to process, and that's definitely what we're finding in our meetings. And so one strategy that we've used just recently to kind of break things down and get some work done in between the meetings is we've broken it into subgroups, some of the work. And so one of our subgroups is looking at opportunities. That's funding, looking at partnerships, maybe with large employers, nonprofits, things like that. Outreach and communications is the second group. So that's both outreach and education to the people of the town, perhaps this board and other committee or groups. And then communication, too, in our public presence, looking at defining affordability, you know, here locally, what does that mean in Red Hook. And the third group is zoning and policy. So shout out to Michael Cole, who's on our committee, who has been carrying around the full zoning, a printed copy of the full zoning code and taking some notes. And we'll also be looking in that group at housing plans and comp plans, housing components, too. And then all the members are assisting with ongoing research data analysis and outreach outside, and in addition to the subcommittee groups. And really, our goal with the subcommittees and all of our work is to build up our understanding so that we can be a resource for you all to tap when you're dealing with housing and housing affordability issues. So I want to encourage you guys to remember us as those things come up. And I think you might, because, you know, also at our meetings, we have both village mayors attend regularly, and of course, we have both Jacob and Julia there. And so in closing, one thing that our guest speaker left us with was a caution not to determine solutions before we've heard from and really understand the issues that are coming up in our community around housing. So again, like the seed that I mentioned earlier, I encourage you to share with us tonight, if you can, and also in an ongoing manner, the housing and housing affordability issues that you come across. We want to keep those lines of communication open. And then also, sort of comma, we'd be interested in your input about how we should be engaging the community to learn more. We definitely don't want to be duplicating efforts. You know, I know the Community Needs Assessment had some questions around housing, and people can get sort of a fatigue and also maybe some confusion about what we're up to. So if you had any input there. So with that, thanks again, and I'll take any questions or comments. Andrew Prescott is here, who's also on the committee, and we can answer.
Very good. Thank you very much, Hart. That was a great intro, and I appreciate that you all are working on this effort. And I thought your last point is probably the most important one, is that affordability comes in so many different forms, you know. A year and a half ago, we weren't thinking in terms of how much somebody could afford based upon mortgage rates, because mortgage rates were so low. And so affordability for somebody who thought they could buy into our community has changed dramatically, even if the prices haven't, and we know for sure that they have. In fact, our assessor lets us know that the state is requiring a 13% trend up this year in order to stay at residential, in order to stay at 100% equalization, which means essentially that property values have increased at least 30% over the last few years in this area. And then couple that with the increase in mortgage rates, and then the actual monthly payment has in many cases doubled for somebody who is considering buying in our community. So yeah, we look forward to, you know, a lot of the inventory of needs, I think I would say, because there's a whole suite of individuals impacted by housing. Yeah, any thoughts? Yeah? Bill?
Have you, I know you're basically in your infancy as a committee, but there is a topic that I have a particular interest in, in which the Duchess County report really didn't address, and that's the mobile home and parks. And as a town of our size, we have pretty high concentration. And there have been some troubling, to me, maybe not to others, but to me, trends across the country where corporations, investors are going and buying up the parks. And because in many of the parks, you may own the box you live in, but you don't own the land underneath, and it costs $5,000 to $10,000 to move it somewhere else, they kind of hold you hostage. And so then they raise the rent for the land, the underlying rent. And so from a stable housing perspective, it creates problems for a lot of people. And so I have seen a variety of different things that have been done at the state and municipal levels to try to help people who are in that situation, at least give them the opportunity to convert it to like a cooperative, so that you end up owning that land like you live in a co-op apartment, that kind of situation, so there's more stability. And I would hope that the committee would look at that, considering what our concentration is, look at things that other states have done, like Vermont. And New York has done some things, and there is funding available through the state to help. If, say, there's a park that has 20 homes or 15 homes, and they decide they want to do, they want to say it's going to go for sale, and they want to buy it. There are some things out there to try to provide more stability for those people. And so I would hope that you would take a good look at that, considering what our concentration is, and perhaps come back to us with some things that you've seen or researched that might be things that we have some governmental ability to deal with. Some things you can't, because they're market-related, but I've seen some kind of interesting things that have been done to try to help people in those situations.
Yeah, so my hometown is Eugene, Oregon, and there's an affordable housing developer there, St. Vincent de Paul, that's done some really innovative things in all of their operations. But one of the things they turned to recently was, they had been building, you know, really quality affordable housing in Eugene and Springfield, and then they turned their attention to mobile home parks, which there are a lot of, and getting ownership of those parks so that they can create that type of circumstance. And the other thing I'd say is that we're definitely looking at some of the non-conventional. I think when you mentioned Vermont, you might be thinking also of like community land trusts and things that take sort of the problem of the speculative real estate market and those conditions and the pressures that they place, I think, on the low and moderate incomes. You can take it out of there, but it is pretty complicated. And I'd say like, at this point, these are the things that's great input, because we want to dig into certain things, because there's so much, and, you know, really review what are the barriers to making what you're describing or what they're doing in other places around mobile home parks happen here? Great, thank you.
Well, yeah, and I would say, let us not forget, and I don't think this board has, because we work on so many programs to assist people in being able to afford to stay in the home that they're in, is that there are many opportunities to help them, the cost of electricity, you know, programs we've been working on to try and make it more affordable, because those costs, you know, once you buy a home, you know, you're sort of stuck with a lot of these needs. And so we're trying to make it possible so folks can actually stay in their homes, because that kind of turnover, while it does present a new housing unit for somebody, also makes it impossible for people to have stability in their families and generations. And of course, we talk about workforce, and, you know, we know firsthand that many of the folks that work for us, or work for the police, or work for the schools, actually can't afford to live in the community that they work, which is, you know, our loss, frankly. So that's why, you know, we're jumping on it. You know, we do have this one project we're working on, and looking at another potential project to work with Tiffany and Pace to maybe do some sort of like design for another property. But yeah, we really look forward to, you know, the work that you guys are doing and to see, you know, some recommendations that we may not be thinking of, you know, coming out of your committee.
I was glad to hear you mention community land trust, because that was something I was going to ask if you were looking into, because I do think that they can play an important role in, you know, housing development and speculative part of it that you brought up, which is, you know, it doesn't do you any good if you set up a project, but there's no protection so that, you know, five, 10 years down the road, someone gets, they sell it at market rate, and then, you know, all your effort is... it at market rate, and then, you know, all your effort is gone at that point. So, you know, that may or may not work here. You know, it may need to be on a larger than one town approach to make it work, but I think it's definitely something worth looking into, so I was glad to hear that that's on your list already.
Great. Thank you both for coming.
Thank you.
Thank you so much, thank you for your work. Thanks, Art. Have a good night. Okay, screen is down. We are moving on to... Next up on the agenda, too many computers here, resolution to support application to Greenway for trail improvements. Okay, so another Greenway grant. Winnicky is applying for, I've attached to you, attached to the resolution, and there's a map. Essentially, this would be a $209,000 project. It's a 50% match, you can do in kind. Obviously, most of this is construction. We're talking about two boardwalks, and... Bridge. Let's see, big screen will cooperate. Let's see, let's try. I'm going to try and get the map, because I think that's what folks will be interested in. There we go.
All right. It's getting better with this technology.
Okay, to, to, okay, so for the folks at home, scroll for you, so you can see, I don't know if you, yeah, you can see my cursor, right? Can you get the cursor so the folks can see? No? Here is Linden Avenue. This is where the crosswalk will be. The multimodal will come in, will join with, you already know, we have our small parking area, gravel parking area down here, we have our stone dust path, takes you into the now already constructed red trail here. There'll be a boardwalk over here to get through some wetish land and fencing. So as it comes out to First Street, we've indicated to the adjoining landowners that will provide fencing here to screen and give them the privacy. And then you see over here, the blue trail. If you have not been on the blue trail, I highly recommend you take a stroll, it's quite lovely. And then there'll be both a bridge and a boardwalk up here, crossing over the street, you see it over here, this area up here. And then eventually, it makes its way up towards the Alumni Center, and you cross over, and then it joins with the Empire State Trail. So the Greenway grant is for the boardwalk here, fence, bridge, and the boardwalk up here. Any question, board members? Okay. If not...
So, well, actually, I might have missed on that, but so...
Sure.
So we have the matching portion of the grant application, I guess, which is initially go by, probably by Winnicky, with, you know, with our input?
Yes.
Okay. And so it does say here that you must provide at least $1 in match, cash or in kind for every dollar of funds requested.
That's correct. So our match would be the 104 minus, we think, in kind will be 5,800, meaning it could be more in kind, but I think realistically, it's a construction project mostly, and I don't think we're going to be doing much of the construction ourselves.
Right, so this is all going to be contracted out, just to be clear, right? We're not doing any of it in-house.
That's right.
Okay.
Very little, just our time, sort of managing and overseeing and organizing and so on and so forth. That's why match is 5,800 in kind.
Yep. But we are not going to manage the grant, right? When it, if the grant is successful, Winnicky would be administering the grant, correct?
That is correct.
Okay. Okay, just checking.
Any other questions, comments? Jacob?
Nope.
Will you be the first to do the whole run?
Yeah, I mean, nobody else has done it. I'll get on there right now, right stop.
What had my...
Got two miles left to walk.
Do you have any more resolution?
Twenty-three.
Twenty-three. Okay, resolution 23, dated April 26, 2023, supporting an application to the Hudson River Valley Greenway for a grant under the 2023 Greenway Conservancy Trail Grant Program. An ISO MO, is there a second?
Call second.
Thank you, Bill. All in favor? Christine Kane?
Aye.
Jacob Testa?
Aye.
Julia Solomon?
Aye.
Thank you very much. Very exciting. Trails, trails, trails. We hope to have more announcements of new trails soon. Resolution to approve task orders, engineering speed limit studies, as we discussed before. I don't want to go through it each and every meeting, but DOT still requires that we do engineering studies. They still have to sign off for we little towns on speed limits on our own roads, he says bitterly. So we have a task order to engage our engineers, Creep and Manning, to conduct speed limit studies in the neighborhoods College and Forest Park, entire runs. Any questions about that, folks?
No, this seems very straightforward.
So I'd like to, that one is for, actually, task order number seven, because I think we want to talk about number five before we go ahead and consider any authorization of number seven. That would be resolution number 24, and it would be not to exceed 7,000 amount for those studies. We have to submit to DOT, and then, of course, they get the final say whether or not we can lower the speed limit to 25 in those neighborhoods. Resolution number 24, authorizing task order number seven for engineering contract, and ISO MO.
Second.
Thank you. Christine Kane, further discussion? If not, all in favor? Julia?
Aye.
Jacob?
Aye.
Bill?
Aye.
Thank you very much. Now, I know we had a request from our highway superintendent to conduct an engineering study for the intersection of Elm and Aspen Wall, and while it is not an enormous amount of money, the law requires of any T that cars come to a stop before making a turn, and that is what exists there. Right, I do have that idea. I'm not sure we, do we really want to spend engineering funds on this, or just say, to our highway superintendent, if you think it needs a stop sign, put a stop sign. That's what the law requires, that they come to a stop. I'd rather use the engineering funds to do work that, you know, determinations that are more complicated. But this seems like we just need to get a decision from our highway super. What do you all think? Bill?
Well, she's got the authority to do it, I agree.
Yeah, I mean, if we don't, if we don't need the study, then yeah, I don't want to spend money.
Seems straightforward.
Yeah.
Yeah, I was trying to remember.
Seems straightforward.
Yeah, right?
Whether there was correspondence with her, where she felt that there was some requirement to do the engineering prior to putting a stop sign.
I didn't think it had any requirement, and I, you know, I just think, you know, it'd be great if we could study everything before we do anything, but, you know, this is, this is not. We have too many speed limit requests, that studies that we need to do for that, that, you know, I think are going to be important for DOT submission.
It's not like this is a very novel intersection, you know? This is something that exists.
Well, yeah, and we're going to get a ton of these kind of requests, because this is not unusual to have Ts where there are no stop signs. So I think we should just encourage our highway super to, you know, make the decision that she thinks is appropriate.
Just did a quick search email, just to see, I don't see, did you do the same thing doing?
Yeah, but my archive on my phone isn't that great.
Well, I mean, she says it requires an engineering study, but I don't, I don't know that it does. So anyway, why don't we, can we move this to the next meeting?
Sure.
And just get clarification.
Something that is a clarification from Creighton-Manning on, because they should be very familiar with the multiple requirements?
Yeah, I did, actually. I made a place call to the management.
Yep, yep.
Before, before the meeting. Okay, so we'll take up task order number five at our next meeting, perhaps if it's requirement. All right, so a sidewalk easement, agenda item number four, I've got to jump back to... Old Farm Road, pretty straightforward, just one of the conditions of the Tradition Development was that they would construct a sidewalk to connect to Route 9. We've been working with the adjoining landowners, and we appreciate their assistance. And our attorneys, their attorneys have been working hard to develop the sidewalk easement. See if I've got a diagram I can put up here for you, maybe? Look it up.
You could zero in on the right-hand side, it's a little bit easier to see. Do you want me to discuss this, or do you have...
Would you please, so I can...
Sure, so we have a right-of-way on Old Farm Road, that's 50 feet wide. There happens to be an intersection there, an existing intersection, which, if you put the sidewalk within that right-of-way, would be a very long sidewalk across an intersection. So there was an effort and a recommendation by our engineer to consider whether it would be possible to relocate the sidewalk farther into that driveway in order to allow a safer crossing. So that was explored with the adjoining owner, and they have offered to provide that easement for the benefit of the town. So we have an easement that would allow the town to allow the installation of that sidewalk, which would be constructed by the developer of Tradition, along Old Farm Road for an area, coming down through that intersection at a narrower point, and then going back up and continuing on through the right-of-way area.
Thank you. Any question?
Do we have an idea of when...
The work will be...
The work will be done? Yeah.
Don't have a schedule at the moment. We've reached out, and we're...
It's a this-year thing, though.
That's what we're expecting. We're expecting where is it?
Yeah, it's a this-year. We just don't know exactly.
Right, so we're just asking for a schedule. We're just, we, obviously, we needed to work out this part of it in order for them to move forward with that construction planning, so...
But this is a good idea, because the opposite side of the road is much, would be much harder for the crossings, as you mentioned.
Yeah, well, the opposite side of the road, there are some issues apparently with drainage and that sort of thing. There's a reason that they didn't want to...
There's the swell, and there's this really large driveway that gets a lot of traffic.
This is the better place for it, from an engineering perspective.
Yeah, it'll be safer, too.
Yep.
Okay. Over to you on resolution 25.
Yes.
Dated April 26, approving execution of permanent sidewalk easement, and it's over the property on Tri-Red Oakland Court by Old Farm Road. And if you've heard the discussion of why we need the easement, document is in front of you, an ISO MO.
Second.
Further discussion? All in favor? Julia?
Aye.
Bill?
Aye.
Jacob?
Aye.
Thank you very much. Okay, let's move along. Resolution to approve local law D regarding no parking portions of Fruitwood Lane, for the folks at home, it's the tangent between Linden and the Red Park, and a portion of the southeastern corner of property. We remind everyone that while there is parking permitted on many roads in our township, that is not the case during the winter. Our snow ordinance prohibits parking on roads from November through April 1, 14. That's my number. Resolution number 26, dated April 26. Any questions before we go ahead and approve the no parking?
Right, so that's with the change for the 185 linear feet.
That's with the change for 185 feet, right? With edit, there was language up at the top there.
But that's already changed.
That's already changed. Okay.
Right, but just to be clear with that's...
Right.
And Deanna will put the date of the...
She's just bringing that to me now.
The 15th?
April 18.
April 18, 2023.
You're welcome.
When it was published in our official newspaper. I'll move a resolution 26. Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? If not, all in favor? Julia?
Aye.
Christine?
Aye.
Jacob?
Aye.
Thank you very much.
So one quick thing, when we come back at our next meeting, we want to have to talk about stop sign.
Yeah.
That occurred to me, is that Pitcher Lane comes into Linden Avenue. Pitcher Lane is our road, and Linden Avenue is a county road.
Yeah.
For all the years I've been here, that was a stop sign. Very recently, it changed to a yield sign. I have no recollection of anything coming before this board regarding that change, and I don't know whether that's something the county did, or what, you know, who put that up, but it may be something that we should...
Pitcher Lane and Linden Avenue?
Yeah.
That's always been a yield sign. Always been a yield sign.
Really?
Yeah, yeah.
Then it came down, and there wasn't a sign for a long time.
Well, that's very possible.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
It does seem, it does seem like something that's newer.
It's a new sign, it's a brand new sign, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
But it's always been a yield. Must be an agricultural.
Oh, oh, that's, okay.
Just those tractors are whipping, whipping along. Now that, now that we've got pretty much everything in place, I think Ryan is finishing up the final touches on the multimodal connection. So I'll be back to you in the next meeting or two, because now that we have that design, we'll be looking, obviously, to lower the speed limit there. So we're going to have a task order to take a look at and lower the speed limit on Fruitwood Lane, so just, you know, bear that in mind.
Excuse me, we need to do the vote.
Vote again.
Vote, you moved it, but you didn't vote.
Oh, I thought we all did.
I thought we did.
I don't recall.
Yeah, I know, we all did.
I thought we did.
Yeah, we voted.
We did.
Okay.
Aye.
We all voted in favor of it.
Yeah, just have to.
Today's memory lapse day. One. Very good, Bill. Okay, we're going to jump right in at Department and Committee reports, shall we? Who would like to do building and zoning?
I believe I'm going to the building department.
Would you please? We have a very lengthy report that you have to cover.
And that's what I'm going to cover.
Okay.
So basically, the two-month period of March 1st till today, there were 58 buildings permits issued, conducted 119 inspections, they issued them for either certificates of occupancy or security.
conducted a hundred and nineteen inspections, they issued them for either certificates of occupancy or certificates of completion, and they collected twenty-five thousand two hundred and eighty dollars and fifty cents in revenue from that process. And as we've always explained, it's the busy building town, so I expect them to continue to be busy.
Yeah, that's been good weather for builders, that's for sure. Next up, highway department, Jacob, would you like to give that report?
Yep, so there's a lot of different bullet points to get to here. First is about the Sock Hill Bridge replacement, so Hudson Valley Engineering Associates has completed the boring in the vicinity of the bridge over the last two weeks as part of the initial evaluation process. The truck route, I think it was last year that we established that. The town engineering firm, Creighton Manning, has given information on the route to New York State Department of Transportation and Dutchess County Department of Public Works for review. The Forest Park Drainage Study is currently under review by Ty and Bond. Already spoke about Elm Street Stop Sign, the next one, fuel pump upgrade, we received the software for the fuel pumps. Installation will begin according to vendor's schedule, it's expected to take three days. The Dutchess County Department of Public Works has gone out to bid for hot mix asphalt paving, and the contracts are ready to facilitate piggybacking by towns. Teresa attached the bid results and will send the Dutchess County contract, and it's available to attorney for the town for review. For the e-waste recycling, just held this past Saturday, the highway department crew set up a collection area and traffic control for the electronic recycling event, building the staff by the highway superintendent to have facilities available for volunteers, so thank Teresa and the crew for that. The Rec Park Dirt Pile, the highway department has been asked to move about two thousand yards of dirt that have been left on-site at Rec Park East as a related construction in twenty-nineteen. They're evaluating the logistics of taking the dirt across Southern Avenue into a field location at Rec Park West. There are issues with whether dump trucks can be used for off-road use, so we may need special equipment, we're using a contractor. Teresa's reached out to Brandy Nelson and Ty and Bond and Conroy Ferrell from Earthworks, Brandy has an opinion, so the best way to get this done. The highway department transported fourteen truckloads of dirt from the pilot at Red Park East to St. Margaret's for the purpose of filling in the empty cisterns. And then Teresa also shared a picture of the salt shed, it's a thirty-year-old salt storage shed that's deteriorated, I can't say that. The roof has been patched, it's leaking, so if you see the picture, there's a supporting post and outside wall that has some damage to it. She is, you know, considering, there's not really a request here, but I think she's kind of asking about a new building. She mentions opportunity for solar on the roof of the new building, so that might be something we'll be asking considering.
Right, yeah, we didn't get the grant officer that we applied for for a new salt shed, so we'll take up applying once again.
Could I ask you one clarification?
Yes.
These bids for.
The pavement.
For something other than hot mix, which we took bids on last fall?
It, it is for hot mix, absolutely.
So I'm just curious, didn't we do that last fall for twenty-twenty-three requirements?
I, I believe.
Is it something different?
I believe this is the county.
Well, I understand that, but we have already a contract in place for twenty-twenty-three, right?
We took those.
In the fall for twenty-twenty-three.
Yeah, that's right.
So I just want you to, can you just?
Yeah.
Go back and clarify that, because I'm not sure what.
Yeah, thank you for.
The purpose of that is, okay.
Future periods, okay.
Yeah, okay, I have no problem with piggybacking, it's great, but.
Right, but if we're going to cover it, then we already have a cover.
Yeah, that was a good, I thought it was a pretty good price, it was a lot lower than what was left here, so, yeah, yeah. Town of Red Hook Water District bill, maybe not the best day to be giving an update, but go ahead.
Yeah.
We had a service interruption today in Linden Acres, unfortunately, but they got it resolved pretty quickly in one day, so it's unfortunate, but apparently there was a contract, a private contract, and it caused a problem. Fortunately, we're small, so we're nimble. The report that's in the package is a monthly report, I tend to use meetings, you can see, there's only two things I want to mention. One is the pump volumes from the wells of the gallons per minute in the pumps. In the past, people have remembered them, they were always around a hundred and fifty, and now it's down to under a hundred. And that's not because they have less water, it's because they intentionally lowered the pumping, because there's no need, that there wasn't a need for that amount of water, so there was no need to be pumping that much excess water. And then the other item is on the storage tank, our water tank, and a lot of discussion among board members here and the water board about, it's thirty years old, and when it was built thirty years ago, we also provided water at Bard College, whether we should rehab it, or whether we should just build another. And the water board, they've come to the conclusion that it's probably better to build a new one than to try to rehab one, because the life expectancy for rehabbing is relatively short versus the cost. And there'll be more on that next month, minutes for their annual meeting, for the annual report that they did is in draft, I saw it. It's just waiting for comments from the other board members, and there's a substantive discussion about this issue. It's important because it's an expensive proposition, very expensive proposition. And so compared to what we paid thirty years ago, and which Bard College contributed, what was it, half? Yeah, you know, things have changed, and so we have to think about how we fund that, so that's that.
Yeah, no, two things I want to say, Bard has agreed to help fund either rehab or replacement, so that, that's good. The dollars yet to be determined, and I think the break was not a private project.
Oh, it wasn't?
No, I think, you know, good news, bad news, but we just know that some of the infrastructure.
Oh, it's aging.
Is aging.
Yeah, along with the tank, that infrastructure's already sixty, seventy years old.
Exactly, so.
So, and they have replaced a bit of the infrastructure, you know, when they, you know, when houses are being built, or they're putting in new lines, but, you know, the life expectancy of these is fifty to seventy years, so.
Yeah, no, I think, I think it'd be a good, a good idea for the water board, you know, when they have time to maybe update their capital assumptions based upon what some of our villagers have experienced.
I know they've discussed it, but I'll bring that up to them.
Make sure that we're putting away enough money each year to satisfy that. Okay, sorry, but. Rec, how would you like to summarize it, well, I was going to give it all up, I'm telling you.
Well.
It peters out, you know?
I'm not sure that this could be summarized too much, because it's, it's a busy, busy time for the rec department. And I'll just start by saying that the requests are coming in for scheduling for use of the various fields, courts, et cetera, at the parks. Continuing interest is high in all of those things, and we're getting requests for new uses. So it's, you know, we're, we're reaching very high usage. So far, we haven't had any problems with being able to accommodate requests, but, you know, if it keeps going at this rate, we may be running into something soon. So I'm not going to go through all of them, but I do want to say that in this report, there are forty-eight things listed that are the spring opening steps.
Give us your top forty-five.
For all of the parks, and, you know, a lot of things that you might think about, which is rolling the fields and repainting dugouts and things, but, you know, also small things like having to get a ton of new sterile sand to put in the sandbox at Rec Park East, and, you know, damaged partitions that have to be repaired in the bathrooms and all kinds of things. So, big, big shout-out, special thanks to Joe Kuhn, Patrick Jones, Tom Pierce, and John Kuhn, who really worked really hard to get this all ready and ready to go. So we do have really amazing rec facilities here in town, and we do it with a really small staff who works wonderfully together, and they're very devoted to all of this. And they also, I want to add, besides the rec parks, they also cover St. Margaret's Home and the cemetery outside of Tivoli, and the church, that's the church building that's there, too. So onward from that, I just want to mention a few things. There, we had a memorial bench for Ted Cutsey, who was a longtime employee here with the town, so that has now been installed by the basketball court at Rec Park East. The annual fishing contest was held earlier this month on the seventh of April, I understand it was very well-attended. As mentioned previously in the highway department report, that dirt pile is still at Rec Park East, and I know the highway super's looking at options to help with the movement, moving for that. We did, there's some information about the trails, which we sort of covered when we were talking about that earlier. Oops, I will second what you said, that if you have been there to take a look and go on some of those trails, you really should, they're beautiful. So we have received a couple of emails about requesting changes to mowing patterns at Rec Park West and whether things could be done differently, excuse me, to establish maybe pollinator-friendly areas. So the rec park, I mean, the rec committee is discussing that, but I, you know, that's as, in line with their goals and the goals that they have been given, that this, these are park lands. So, you know, they have to, and we have to be realistic about the type of equipment and the person power that we have to try to keep them under control. So there's been no decision made on that at this point. Unfortunately, we're still having people who are, you know, damaging the park by, for instance, driving onto lawn areas of the parks. And so, you know, particularly now in the spring, there's no frost, it's wet, it's huge ruts and things, and it's a lot of work to put those back together. So number one, please don't do that, and if you see anyone that's doing that or you hear about it, please do let us know, because it is difficult to track that down. Tentative dates for summer rec playground for people doing planning in that are July fourth, I mean, July fifth to August fourth. If they are tentative, but at least it would give you an idea to, to start doing your planning. We did have a tremendous amount of use of both rec parks over the winter, because we didn't have that much snow this year. So lots more garbage pickup, these mutt mitts, which are called, you know, for the dog waste that's there. Also, we are having problems with people using the mutt mitts, but then putting the pet waste in, say, the recycling containers, which then fouls all of that, and they won't take it. So if you're picking up your pet waste at the parks, we really appreciate that, please don't put it in the recycling containers. Put them into the garbage containers or the ones that are marked landfill. They have seen more and more people out using the trails, as we mentioned earlier, so that is good to see. And we, also, they're beginning, because, you know, there's a lot more requirements for the staff now for the summer rec programs, and so, believe it or not, they're already working on hiring the staff for the summer programs. So, and the summer, the summer programs brochure is slated to come out the first week of May, so. See, that's time just to go through, imagine how much work it is to do it all.
Exactly.
Yeah.
You know, and I think you mentioned the summer rec program, we'll call it camp informally, although technically, I don't know that it's a camp, but that's a good example. Heart's not with us now, but just some of the things that we do to make it more affordable here, because the families have to find a way, you know, to entertain their children and advance the, you know, their goals. Paid camp can be expensive, and so.
Right, so there's no cost for it.
There's no cost, and, and, you know.
And it's all day now.
And it's, well, it's a good chunk of the day.
Yeah.
It's a good chunk of the day, so.
But it used to be just mornings.
It used to be just mornings, and we expanded it, and that's, you know, another, another reason why. Right, okay.
That's right.
Okay, so now that I've mentioned terrific, how about the police report?
It's short.
Okay, good, we like that.
For the month of March, there were eighty-seven incidents reported. That may seem like a high number, but many of these things are kind of relevant. There were eighty-seven in town, they also now are doing contract work for the village of Tivoli, which they had nineteen. They did do a lot of traffic tickets in the month, there were forty-five moving violations, no parking tickets, and they made one arrest. The details are in attached to the packet of the various types of calls that they have gone on.
Let me see if I can make everybody dizzy and go.
There you go.
Somewhere in there, right?
Yeah.
That's the cover, double page. Okay, thank you very much. CAC, who would like to do the CAC report?
I'll do it.
So this is the report for April. On this past Saturday, Red Hook had its fourth repair cafe since COVID, so this continues a trend of having more visitor traffic with each one, in part because there were other Earth Day activities happening at the Red Hook Community Center. There were a lot of people, I think, forty-two visitors brought in sixty-one items. They were grateful for the resources in the community. Advertising for it happened through email, flyers, word of mouth, there are repair cafes that happen throughout the Hudson Valley. So if you're interested in checking one out, there's a website, repaircafehv.org, or you can wait until the next one in a few months, it'll be happening here in Red Hook. This event also included a dollhouse, model electrical home, with information about how to electrify your home and access rebates from the Inflation Reduction Act, or the IRA. The Town Energy Committee also has a website with more information about electrification at electrifirehuck.org. So that's a really great event this past weekend. The annual e-waste event, which we've already mentioned a couple of times, is also held on Saturday. It was co-sponsored by Senator Hinchey's office. Volunteers collected twenty-one pallets of electronic waste, as well as two boxes of compact fluorescent light bulbs and four boxes of linear bulbs. Collected electronic waste materials will be reused and recycled, so it's really exciting to have a lot of both repair happening and also e-waste collection as well. The CAC thanks all the volunteers who came out to volunteer, or came out to help, including students from Bard College, Red Hook High School, Senator Hinchey's office, and more, so lots of great stuff happening at the CAC as always.
Thanks, Jacob, and a, and a big shout-out to Steve Appenzeller for Repair Cafe, he's the main organizer. Jen Kavanaugh ran this year's e-waste. Our very own Julia Solomon was there for a good chunk of the event with her kids, I might add, and they did a terrific job.
They loved, they loved what.
I couldn't get the.
Just liked the other thing.
Really excited about e-waste, loves it.
E-waste rocks.
I don't know which you can find there.
No, I didn't say, no, there were a lot of volunteers this year, I think, you know, it's a really, really popular volunteer event. And there's always, you know, there's always a street march.
You know, it was, it was really life-affirming, we had so many people come, like, I love this, that's why I love living here, all these great things. It's nice to hear that. Tree preservation, who's going to?
I'll do that as well.
Save the trees.
Yeah, so this is the month of report for April eighteen, the following was discussed at the eighteenth meeting. So there are plans in place for Arbor Day celebration, which will be happening this Saturday at ten AM until two PM. So check that out if you're interested, exciting to happen following Earth Day this past weekend. The Mill Road School poster concept, contest, and nature trail walks are underway. Poster judging has been moved to today, Wednesday, April twenty-sixth, so I think that may have already happened, but as of last week, it was for today. Six trees, including a tulip tree, a yellowwood tree, and three magnolias, so we planted at Rec Park West. And then new options for advertising and celebration were discussed, including flyers and signage.
Jacob, did you want to mention what, what the tree commission gives away on Arbor Day? Seedlings?
Yeah, there are seedlings, I don't know what the variety is this year, but.
It's a whole, whole berry.
It doesn't say on there.
Right.
So free tree seedlings, tree planting and care pamphlets, raffle, activities for kids, bluebird nesting boxes for sale, pollinator garden exhibit, a local beekeeper's going to be there, the ozone is going to be there, we're talking about plastic recycling, and I guess the Red Hook Library is also going to have some help or information there.
Thank you, yeah, yeah, I wish that they put the flyer in with the report, but check it out in the packet if you're watching at home.
Very good, I think that's all that we have for department and committee reports. We did talk about. We did talk about maintaining Rec Park and, and St. Margaret's and the cemetery. And we talked about electrifying. And just for the folks at home, we did receive formal notification that we received our ten thousand dollar grant, our Clean Energy Communities grant for all the work that we've done. They have another funding opportunity for us for transitioning more of our landscaping equipment for municipal properties. So there's a list for that. We're also doing community campaign demonstration. We're, in conjunction with the Red Hook Community Center, will be taking out landscape equipment out into the community and demonstrating for folks how, how well these products work nowadays, but also that they can get a feel for it and, and see if it might work for them in their residential uses that they have. So more good news on transitioning to a cleaner and single-cycle, I have to say this for the folks at home, single-cycle engines. Those leaf blowers, those chainsaws, those mowers. They contribute so much to harming the environment, the emissions, for the amount of work that they do. It's, it's, it'll be great when we transition over to
I can mention the noise pollution.
Well, the noise as well. Exactly right, so. Okay, folks, thanks very much for coming tonight. At this time, we are going to enter into executive session to discuss the matter under negotiation whose discussion might affect the price. And substantially affect price? Subs, thank you, Phil, substantially affect price. And so I bid you good night, and thank you very much for joining us. We'll see you May ninth.